To order, but before we get started, I'd like to make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to get one of our spring rolls for our culinary arts students.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, Marge, for bringing this tonight.
Thanks, Marge.
So Ed, would you do roll call, please?
Sandersville?
Here.
Wyman?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
Amos?
Crowe?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Okay, John, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Someone? Second.
Ed, roll call?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Up first, a citizen comment, so Jason Dinning, would you like to come and address the board?
Yes, thank you. My name's Jason Dinning. I'm here with my wife, Megan. We're here to ask permission to have New London School bus pick our son up next year when he starts school. We live just really close. We're less than one mile from the district line. And my wife's got maps she can hand out, shows where we live. Oh, you got it.
John provided the map.
Okay.
But thank you for reading one just in case.
So if you can see on the map, the line obviously doesn't stay on the road. I live just, I'd say, a few hundred yards off of Nebraska Avenue. The line goes north on Nebraska Avenue from Forlane, and then it jumps, and it literally goes through the middle of the cornfield. And that's what makes us less than one mile. I'd be a lot closer than that if the line was actually on the road. But so we're, yeah, we're asking for permission for the New London bus to come to our house. The reason, I guess, that we're going to New London is really because of family. All of our family who goes to New London has gone to New London, and that's where our support is. I mean, our, both of our parents live in New London, we have great-grandparents, nieces and nephews that go to school there now, and our son next year will have two first cousins in his class. So it's really about family is why we're going there, and we live so close to the line. The New London School bus comes within, I don't know, a mile or two from our house already. We can see it out the front window going by when they do. But that's why we're going there. It has nothing to do with anything else other than family. But there is no law that says school buses can't cross lines. All it says is that you need to have mutual agreement between, you know, you've got to have agreement. So that's what we're asking for is just permission. If you get permission, there is no law for school buses to cross lines. As a matter of fact, I did some calling around, and just a little bit of checking around I did. This is actually pretty common. I talked to New London, Danville, and they, Danville goes into West Burlington and picks up kids. New London goes into Danville and picks up kids. Not very far. I'm talking, you know, right, they're not going miles, which we're not, we're close. But and they both do Fort Madison. They, with Central Lee, they said their buses actually cross. They pick up kids that want to go to Fort Madison and Central Lee. Mount Pleasant does the same thing. Mount Pleasant's picking up kids in Houghton, in the Fort Madison School District every day. So this isn't something that's uncommon that we're asking. So I've talked to all them people, and it seems like something that goes on, just trying to, you know, the Fort Madison School Bus Director, you know, he said they just try to work with them. They, you know, they do what they need to do. So that's what we're doing. We're asking for permission. Well, your decision's not going to affect where we go. We've already decided that, and that's, like I said, because of family. And that's the best fit for us, and that's where our support is, and that's where we will be. But we would like our kids to be able to get off the bus and get off the bus at our house. And we're so close, it just, it seems like the right thing to do. So does anybody have any questions? I'd love to answer any questions if I could. Any questions, John?
No.
Okay.
Not about school or maybe about residency, but.
Okay.
And New London's already approved to come in.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you guys, did everybody get this email? Willie was going to pass this around, or he was going to email. I've got, I've got a letter here from New London, a letter that they said it absolutely no problem for them to do it. They've already agreed to it. They've got the bus really close anyways going by, so it's, and you guys can all look at the letter. And that superintendent from New London wrote, and Willie was talking about emailing it to everybody. You guys can all read that, too. So I think that's all I've got unless we forget something. If nobody has any questions, I'll be happy. Nope?
Thank you for your question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we're at the minutes claims and financial report. Did John or Ed anything you'd like to point out from those?
I had, I've got a few things, sorry. I have a few things that I wanted to just bring your attention to as you reviewed the financials. There were a few things that were maybe different from other months. You might have noticed the, there was a bill for $15,000 from Logra Education. That's our Spanish II online curriculum that we are using. There was a, from Touchpoint, there was for our new time clock system. That was part of bills. That's what that Touchpoint for 20, just about $25,000, and we're getting, getting close to implementation on our new time clock system. There was a bill in there from Specialty Underwriters, and if you'll remember, Specialty Underwriters is the company that ensures our personal devices, or not personal, our one-to-one devices. So that's what that bill was, and I will say that we've had good, let's see, the usage. We haven't had a lot of breakage, I guess, is what I'm saying, so that's, that has been positive. Shy Pattery, the bill from Shy Pattery, $15,757 is for the Van Allen Construction documents. And then the last thing that we've talked about, we had talked about several times, the food service truck from Norton Chevrolet, that was in there, $34,064. So those are just a few that were maybe different than, you know, the regular bills of the month, so.
Do you have any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve.
Someone?
Second.
Ed, roll call?
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, that approves the minutes claims and financials. Up first, under reports is going to be for instructional services, and Katie has an update for us on several of these. Ready?
Yep, I got it.
All right, so the first sheet that I have on your packet is about our remote learning program, and so about a mid-semester update on what our numbers look like. If you remember, in August, we were right around 165-ish, up to 172 some days, remote learners that had opted into that option from the district. At semester time, we enrolled 60 students, grades K through 11 into Edge Newity. And our grade 12 students, we made sure that they had those options that would allow them to complete their senior year either remotely in some way or through SCC or other options, but individual planning to make sure that they had the credits they needed for that. So you can see the numbers in front of you. How many students per grade that we have, our total of 60 students. So we have that down to a more manageable option. And then we're also tracking their progress through Edge Newity. And so just a quick explanation of the progress in their coursework. As of this weekend, we have 20% are in a green, on or ahead of pace to complete their coursework by the end of our semester. 60% are 0 to 20% behind, and 0 to 10% is pretty common. That's a fairly standard number for Edge Newity. So once they hit 10%, we really start connecting with them daily, minute to minute, how they, and motivation to get kids into the courses and problem solving if there's issues. We have 20% that are more than 20% behind, so when you look at that number, that is concerning for those students. And we will have some processes in place that we will be working with and going forward with, I'll explain in just a minute. The next pieces of data look at the amount of student login. So 45% of our students are logging in within the last three days. Again, these numbers on Friday, so it would have been within that week. 41% of the students had logged in within the last seven days, and 14% haven't logged in within the last seven days or longer. So with flexibility of Edge Newity, sometimes it's hard to catch the moment of login. They could be doing marathon runs of, I'm going to do all my homework in 24 hours, and then not log in for the next three days. That happens. So that, this number is sometimes hard to gauge and would vary from day to day. So if you flip that page over, you'll see an actual graph over time that gives you some information of those pieces of data. So that red number is the percent of last activity within three days. So you can see 75% in that number from when we started in January through now. A little bit more stable than what that data would suggest. The blue line is, all of our students are at very level courses. Some are in a little bit higher placement, none are in a lower placement. So that number is pretty stable as well. And then the green one is percent on pace, and that has been consistently across, fairly stable, a little bit of a drop-off this time of year as kids are probably getting spring fever, being panned into a computer for their coursework. However, again, not a lot of surprises for us. I think we're fairly typical when we talk to Edge Newity. They see some strengths and they see some typical second semester online learning problems that we have been working through. So our response to especially those students who are struggling, we have our six remote learning teachers or advisors who are connecting with these families. We have logs with both the Edge Newity teacher and our remote instructor, our remote advisors, connecting with those families. They're making not just email and electronic connections, but also phone calls. And then they are also getting support from our school social worker, building administrators, and myself, if need be, to connect with families. In rare occasions, we were having some problems with a student or two that is struggling and a little bit off grid. So we're doing everything we can to get them connected, and if we can't get an answer, we've even gone to the home and knocked on the door. So we're trying, not always successful, and again, that is a minority, very minority amount of students. Our students who have an IEP for special education or are receiving Title I reading services at the elementary are getting those services, they're getting them remotely. But I definitely want to make sure that we're supporting those needs and gap areas for kids who might have otherwise struggled. Similar to what we did the first semester, those teachers are making those arrangements one-on-one, using Zoom, using Canvas, using any resources that they can to connect with them virtually. And then our partnership with Edge Newity has gone fairly well. We do contact with them, review data, they answer our questions, they respond, they'll jump onto Zoom with us, and they will schedule meetings on a regular basis to review that data and help us in any way possible. The teacher, the Edge Newity teacher and our building, and our district advisors connect. They're emailing each other, they're asking questions, explanations, and other resources, so that partnership is going well. Moving forward. Any questions on remote learners?
Katie, I have a question just concerning the elementary. How is the elementary overall performing as we think about being a lot of pace?
Fairly well, actually. They're enjoying the fine arts, the art, and the PE classes, health classes, the coding classes. I think we have one or two students in that, and they're doing, they're doing well. We had a little bit of a hiccup at the middle school with taking six courses in an academic setting. Very challenging for some of them, so we modified that to some degree. Within those first couple of weeks, we might have dropped some of their coursework down to four or five courses instead of six because it was a lot for them to adjust to at that middle school range. So from that perspective, there were some modifications there. But overall, the elementary, they like some of those extra things, especially the fine arts, art classes.
I'm just thinking about them integrating back in hopefully in the whole district.
We did have six elementary families who enrolled in our homeschool assistance program at semester, and as of March 1st, five of those six have come back into the district. So we're excited to welcome them back. The next document that you have are the school permanent advisory committee goal areas that we have. We haven't set goals, which is completely understandable this year, but this would be our data, strictly would be looking at. And some of this data will have another piece to put in at the end of the year. Our literacy and our math for the elementary will definitely have an endpoint. So when we go through some of these pieces, we will take the full entire year and reach black on that as we plan for the fall. The first page starts out with our formative assessment literacy test called Formative Assessment for Teachers. And this data, our goal is always 80% as set by the state. We typically set grades based on actual class grade bands. So just looking at kindergarten in the fall, they're 53%. We've grown by 4%, we're now at 57% for math and literacy. First grade, you can see they grew by 8%, second grade by 1%, third grade by 1%, fourth grade by a lot more, 9%. And then fifth grade has dropped just a little bit. Notoriously, when we look at trends, our winter testing is not our best testing. So if we look at patterns overall, winter is generally our smallest growth. Usually by the end of the year, we're celebrating back where we want to be. For some reason, warm weather just seems to help kids' brains work better maybe, and that's hopefully going to show more growth as we move forward throughout the year. If you can look that up, and our elementary math, some really exciting celebrations that our buildings and our teachers are hopefully enjoying. So this is our second year in our math program, and our growth is, over time, has been really exciting. So our kindergartners started at 23%, and our winters, windows show 50%, amazing growth. Love watching those kiddos pick up the language of math. The first graders went from 8% to 38%, second grade from 7% to 31%, third grade from 9% to 29%, fourth grade from 17% to 36%, and fifth grade from 25% to 35%. Again, if you have an elementary math clue, tell me, kiss the brain, because they're doing some great stuff. Our secondary math data is, we had fall, then we'll have winter, so this is the end of the year for us. However, we will be giving ISAS this year, and we'll see what that, some of the data looks like from two years ago as another data point to consider for our instruction. So sixth grade went from, is that, was that 69% and 62%? Seventh grade, 67% to 71%. Eighth grade for literacy, 69% to 72%. Ninth grade, 78% to 74%. Tenth grade from 69% to 70%. And 11th grade from 65% to 71%. So some pockets of great growth and some others that will continue to support them, and hopefully their next data point shows the growth that they've made. For math, you can see, again, some of the similar trends depending on the grade. Sixth grade, we went from 62% to 54%. Seventh grade, 67% to 61%. And you can read through 69% to 62%. Ninth from 78% to 68%. Tenth from 70% to 74%. And 11th from 69% to 66%. I'm not sure what some of those anomalies are. We haven't gotten to sit down with teachers and admin and see where some of those pieces are. My initial, my initial brush through was, we didn't have as high a numbers testing this time as we did last time, which could play into that. Our building numbers sometimes impact that overall growth that we show. So on the science, you can see sixth grade, 63% to, or 73% to 66%. Seventh is 83% to 72%. And eighth, was that 78% to 73%? On the backside, you'll then see 10th grade went from 80% to 75%. And again, I know that one of those grades, we struggled with the numbers. We didn't get 100% of our kids tested. We had more around 60 to 70% due to the testing window. So again, we need to problem solve through that and those teachers on that data. Any questions so far?
Do you want to, since you're talking about assessment, you want to talk just a bit about ISAS?
Sure. My favorite topic right now. So ISAS has not been excused this year. We are required to give the Iowa statewide assessments due progress, formerly known as the Iowa assessment, formerly known as ITES or ITDS. So take your pick. We are excited to put that into our kids' hands this year. It will be done, again, through computer use. The only caveat is that the grades three through five will be taken in the written form for the writing and language test. If you haven't had strong computer skills for typing, putting a writing test in front of you seems a little unfair, so we are ordering the paper pencil tests so they can write it out, which is what they've been doing all year. So our window will be right now from April 7th through the 30th. Makeups might go past that a little bit, and we're working to make sure that we have adequate time to proper those tests and make sure our kids are successful. Teachers and principals are working out their schedules for those tests, and we're ready to go. We're getting the kids rostered, and teachers are doing a great job of getting their test security modules taken so they're all certified. So that's a little bit about the work of getting ISAS ready to go. Only other thing to touch on is summer school. Really excited to broaden some opportunities for summer school. In the past, we have typically always offered literacy, elementary, Title I programs. This year, we're really recognizing our data, recognizing the impact that we've had with the overall pandemic. We want to broaden that to math. We want to make sure that we're offering our secondary kids some options for transition, recognizing that you can see from our numbers, we have kids who have not been in school for a year now. We need some transition supports, we need some credit recovery supports, and we need to make sure that we are putting those kids' opportunities in the best place forward. So just planning for some of those things, looking at using our ETR cons to fill in those gaps. Have talked, sent out some surveys, and our teachers, our parents, and our administrators have just overwhelmingly said, hey, I've got some great ideas, what about? So paying attention to some of those things, but then also, most importantly, paying attention to connecting the kids to mental health resources, and always thinking about what we're doing with food options. So want to make sure that we're talking with the community and seeing what we can do to mitigate some of those scary situations that our kids could possibly come across.
That sounds wonderful. I'm excited to hear math.
Plenty of cases, plenty of cases.
I'm excited to hear math, so.
That is the ISAS. If we, when we do them that late, whatever the life of the people have been, it's also important.
So since the majority of the test is online, we will have some immediacy. Now, as of last week, the state said we'll have some immediacy of the paper, or of the information back to us. The paper pencil will take a shorter turnaround than what we had last time. Last time, if you remember, we took the test in March and April, and we got the results back in October, which makes it harder to make some action steps. We hopefully will have them early summer. And the electronic step will hopefully be faster than that, thankfully.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to superintendent's report.
Okay, a few things in the superintendent's report I wanted to update you. Some of the major bills that have passed or are still in the process. Senate File 269, that's the state supplemental aid bill. That did pass, it's been signed by the governor. As most of you know, there was a 2.4% increase in state supplemental aid. That equates to $7,227 per pupil. They add $10 to the district cost or the district dollars for per pupil equity. That's not, that's not something that we see in our district. We, we're already equitable, so they say. So anyway, there, and they added additional dollars to bring all districts up to the statewide average for transportation. There was some property tax relief in that bill, and the bill totaled an amount of $43 million. House File 532, that's what they call that, is the qualified instruction bill that has passed the House and is in the Senate Subcommittee. This is as of Friday. So this is, it's $27 million in additional funding to districts. It's about $60 per student if it passes. The House would like that to go into this year's, into this fiscal year, and it would be based on the number of days in school per student, the number of face-to-face days. That's what the House would like to see. And then the Senate would like to put that, those dollars into next year's budget. And it'd just be part of the per pupil for next year. And as you guys know, there's been, it says not the only, these are some of the notes from our lobbyists, and as you guys have probably listened to and read, there was a lot of angst over several districts that just, they didn't come back face-to-face. So they're, I guess, you know, it's recognition that if you were face-to-face, probably had some more costs, and so that's what they're trying to do there. Senate File 159, that was the governor's, that was the big bill. It was the governor's omnibus bill, and it passed out of the Senate, and it's sitting in the House Education Committee. And as I reported to you last time, the House created three new bills to cover everything that was in there. I had put this together, and then Friday, I got some new information. So the voucher, HSB 243, is dead. That is not alive now. So unless it would come back in some creative form, that is, that is done for the year. The charter schools piece of that is still alive. That passed out of Subcommittee last Tuesday. So either district or, it could be private charter schools, that is still alive. And then HSB 240, and our lobbyist called it, that's the everything else bill, passed out of Subcommittee last Monday. The statewide student information system, there was some push for all districts to go to the same SIS, and so that is now dead. Funding flexibility, the ability to move funds from different accounts and having some flexibility there is still alive. Education tax credits for families is still alive. And then I think we talked a bit about open enrollment changes, because they were going to, they were going to make some changes to open enrollment to where kids would be eligible to participate in extracurricular activities right away, and that caused some concern with the state associations, the girls' union, and the boys' association. So the 90 days of ineligibility would be waived only if it's agreed upon by both districts. So that's Senate File 159. Just a few others. House File 675, that's a substitute authorization bill. It's still making its way through, and that would put into place some of the flexibility that the governor has given us this year for substitute teachers. That was in the governor's proclamation, and by her authorization, this would, this would put some of that flexibility into code. this would put some of that flexibility into code for substitute, um, teachers. Um, Senate File 130, uh, to increase the max earnings for school board members, uh, to who, who, the amount that you could earn from the school and still be on the school board, I believe that, uh, went to six thousand dollars in that particular Senate file.
No, we're not, we're not gonna get paid. No, no, forget it.
Yeah, you get three times as much. Three times zero is still zero. Um, they, uh, they, uh, something else that's still making its way is, uh, five virtual days instead of snow days. You, you wouldn't have to have snow days to, to, to make up and do a virtual day. So, uh, that's something that we have not chosen to do here in our district, um, but it, there is conversation about, um, you know, having up to five virtual days and, you know, basically use them, lose them, use them how you want to. Um, and then I know I mentioned before, there's a bill, uh, that would give districts the, um, ability to increase their instructional support levy to fund, uh, a school resource officer, uh, and all of the costs involved, uh, in having a school resource officer. So, I'll keep you updated if you want all of that, but that's where, um, a number of those things are, um, as of today. Um, let's see, the, uh, the February, uh, school board development session, I have met with, uh, with Harry Heiligenthal a couple of times, uh, via Zoom. Uh, he has taken kind of those, those big areas of, um, uh, of culture and facilities and opportunities for students, and, and his, uh, together, we kind of talked through some of the notes that he has, and we're trying to put those into a, um, uh, some notes that I can share that, that, you know, that kind of, we could get some boots on the ground with. So, uh, actually, he'll, he's, he's, um, uh, he, he thought he would have that done by tomorrow afternoon. Um, okay, so this, I, I thought this was interesting. I like to share this data when it comes, because I, I think it gives us some good perspective. The twenty nineteen, twenty twenty statewide minority enrollment percentage by district, this is, this, uh, is from the School Board Association. They always come out with some interesting data, uh, each month that we can look at. Um, so, over here, um, is the legend. So this is percent of minority enrollments to total pre-K enrollments. So this, this would be, um, students who are non-white or not Caucasian. So the gray is the lower percentages, and as it gets darker then, uh, it gets a bit higher, and then the blue would be fourteen point five-two percent to twenty-four point seven-four, and then it goes into the, kind of the, the yellowish goldish, and then the, and then the dark gold, uh, to which, the dark gold would be the hu, the districts with the highest percent of minority enrollments. Now, that's, that's not ELL, that's not English language learners, it's just those students who have identified, uh, in this, in the student information system as, uh, as a minority. Um, and so we'll go over here to, to our area of the state, and I'll pull that up just a bit. There's Mount Pleasant. Uh, so our enrollment, twenty-one point four percent of our students, uh, identify as a minority, and I'll, I'll show you the breakdown of that in just a minute. So this is just kind of a, kind of a look at, um, at our area here. And I'll pull back out a bit so you can see the rest of the state. And how that looks. And then, um, just the, the, so you might ask, well, well, in Mount Pleasant, what minorities, you know, how are, how are they identifying? So here's what the percentages are here. Um, so seventy-four point four percent of the students identified as white, uh, ten point eight as Hispanic or Latino, um, three point eight as Asian, uh, three point seven as two or more ethnicities, uh, three point one as, um, black or African-American, and then point two of a percent, uh, as American Indian or Native Alaskan. So, um, yeah, just interesting information, gives us good perspective about who we're serving, uh, here in, in our school district. So, any, any questions on that? Okay, very good. Um, number four, uh, is the, uh, return to learn plan review, and, and I, I had this on the, the policy committee agenda, and we talked, um, for, for a little bit about this. Because I, I wanted you to know, and I wanted to say publicly, that, that, um, I've been getting a number of inquiries about the masking requirement. And, uh, with the governor's, um, relaxing of the statewide mandate, when are we going to, uh, relax our masking requirement? So, um, I've, I've received, uh, probably two or three phone calls and three or four emails about it. Um, you know, have, have, have had a number of conversations just in the community, uh, about it. Um, so, you know, and maybe you have also, but I wanted to, wanted to let you know that it's, it's, uh, it's out there, people are beginning to ask about it. So, uh, I just have a couple of thoughts that I shared with the policy committee, and I think it's important to consider, uh, these things, um, as we go forward. Um, number one is, the, the, the protocols for close contacts have, has not changed for quarantining. So if you are a close contact, uh, if someone at school, you know, is, is positive with the virus, and you are a close contact, uh, six feet or less for fifteen minutes or more, but both of you are wearing masks, then you don't have to quarantine. Uh, but if one of those parties is not wearing a mask, then you still have to quarantine as, as per the protocols for, uh, seven to fourteen, seven to fourteen days, depending on the, on the situation. So that's important to remember, because we don't want to lose big bunches of students, um, as we go forward. Uh, I think the second piece of information to consider is, um, our school staff will have the opportunity to receive the second dose of the vaccine on March twenty-sixth, uh, so that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Um, the, the other thing that I think we, we want to remember, and Katie talked about it here this evening, we're gonna be moving into some, some fairly high-stakes assessments with, um, uh, with, uh, the ISAS, and, and, and ISAS is, um, uh, goes, you know, probably eighty percent of the, uh, Iowa school performance profiles is based on the ISAS. And so I would just, I would just caution also that we, we don't want to lose big, big bunches of students as we're working our way through the ISAS assessment, uh, because that would be really difficult to get those made up in a, in a, uh, in a way. Uh, because if you, you, you have to have ninety-five percent, uh, participation, or they really, they really ding you on the, uh, the, uh, school performance profile. Um, and then the last thing I would just mention, and maybe you guys have some thoughts, but the last thing I would mention is that we're, we're headed in now to the spring activity season, and we haven't been able to, we, you know, last year, we didn't have an activity season, so it's been, you know, a year and a half to two years bef, uh, since, since our activities have been going on, uh, in, in the spring. And the other thing that I, as far as activities goes, I would, I would, I would hate to jeopardize, especially at that secondary level where we have things going on, I don't want to jeopardize our kids or our teams by losing big bunches of kids, uh, through the activities, uh, season. So those are just my thoughts. I, I think there's, you know, there's room for discussion. Um, I think it's a legitimate discussion to have, uh, and, and we can continue, you know, to have it as we, and as you guys know, the Henry County Positivities numbers are low. They've been one percent, two percent, zero percent for the last, uh, I don't know, two and a half, three weeks. So, um, anyway, uh, I don't want to speak for the policy committee, maybe, maybe policy committee members, you want to, uh, say something, but, um, anyway.
I mean, my, my thoughts were, uh, you know, I, I'm not a mask fan, but we entered the year with masks, and I believe it is helpful. Um, I think, I don't know, maybe the principals will know better than I am. The students are used to them, maybe not used to them, but they know it's a norm now. So my thoughts are to just finish the year out. I mean, I'd hate to risk anything else.
And I'm really hopeful that we have a good summer and maybe be able to step into the school in the fall without them. But all the kids who missed those fun things, their senior year, frankly, the parents who grieved about as much as the kids, it would be awful if we said, okay, let's loosen up, and then all of a sudden discover it was a horrible mistake, and we've got everybody back again, and we would get resistance on all fronts by flipping back and forth in decisions. I think we're best off to stay the course. What we're doing, I think, is working. So keep it up and look forward to next year.
We've also had a lot less spread for influenza.
Just in general.
Well, as a flip side, if we did loosen up and we had to go back, then all you guys would have to start reinforcing again. It sounds like starting over in the school year again, probably worse.
Little kids are a lot easier.
They're pretty good.
I would agree with Chuck and Mark, that's, uh, the stated course of the year. This is going to be a hotter subject now, because CDC did just release a new guideline today for vaccination, and obviously with our teachers getting their second round of vaccinations, uh, and the general public, more people in the general public getting it, I think we're going to start hearing more people saying, when are masks going to be dropped? So if we could, as a board, just unify, be able to say, we started the year with it, we're gonna finish the year with it, and in the fall, we will, or before the fall, we'll get what it is at that point. My hope is no masks next year.
I think we're all about a boat, Josh. And I don't think any of us up here just love wearing these darn masks. If you're a little.
Yeah, that's, uh, you know, one thing also that you should know, and, and I had this conversation with the policy committee the previous month, we, we have begun to do, uh, and, and kind of reopen a bit some of the things that we were doing, some of our after-school programming, uh, we've, we've reinstated, and we're, we're starting to do some of those things, and, and, you know, uh, we're able to do some of those things because we've, we've, we've been doing the mitigation. So, um, so anyway, um, you know, it's something important to talk about, and, and I think, uh, you know, going forward as the question comes, I, I want to have good direction on how to, how to answer people, so.
Not on the mask subject, but on the vaccination subject? I don't know if you saw that West Liberty had to call off school today because of adverse reaction to the second dose of the stat.
Okay.
So they had to shut down due to the stepping. Did we have any negative reactions on the first one?
I don't think on the first one so much, no.
I got one of the first.
Yeah, well, then I wonder if they, huh, interesting, I wonder if that was a, a Friday, because we, ours was inten, is intentionally scheduled for a Friday, uh, to have a weekend to recover.
It was, I saw it on the, the CERF news last night, and it was today, and they were planning to renew tomorrow, but today they weren't.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, usually that will last a couple of days if they have it, because after that second shot, it's more typical that you get a reaction. I checked with my doctor about that, since I had had a bad reaction to a blue shot earlier, and he said, get shots better than dying. Okay.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, um, good discussion. Um, the, uh, two weeks from today, or two weeks from this evening, March twenty-two work session, what we'll do and plan to do there is, um, visit the fiscal plan and equipment, uh, and penny sales tax spending plan. We've been working, the site committee has been working on that over the last few months, um, and, uh, so we'll, we'll hopefully have that finalized, uh, for your, uh, review at that work session, and the same with the penny sales tax spending plan. Uh, we usually use that, uh, for, for technology-related kinds of things, so I'll have that for your review also, uh, during that work session. And that's the superintendent's report.
Hey, everybody's got a copy of the board committee reports. Um, would some members of the site committee like to share out how they're being equipped with ICAP?
I thought it was a very impressive, uh, presentation that they gave. They have a lot of options, a lot of hard options to kind of help on. It's very multi-passive, but they've, they're, their turnaround time in the initial assessment is very, it was much less than anticipated by far. But it's very exciting for us to start a, a long-term plan down and kind of see all those pieces fall and win. And what options they have.
I would say, yeah, we've been kind of looking for direction. They definitely laid out a plan that we probably, uh, we've been talking about, but it does put everything together that we need to do to move forward, and so it takes a lot of the guesswork out of it, it's what they presented, so I think it is what we're looking for.
I, I wish they could have, uh, presented it in front of the whole board, and, you know, like this, it would, it would, it would be good. I think it's, uh, I think it's exactly what we need to look ahead to whether we prepare some of the, you know, not necessarily the school buildings, we have other buildings than just the school buildings, of whether they, you know, feasibility is it going to be to fix it, to build something else, please, uh, I mean, there's, they're pretty comprehensive, so I thought it was, I thought it was great.
One especially like the part with, you're going to chuck, where they're talking about the visibility of the building, repairable place, where they show a twenty-year cost, right, of building, or keeping it around, and that's very good in places.
I, I mean, I think it would be great for the public to see that also, um, and hopefully we can get some of everybody's opinions on what we should do, what we can do. Uh, I think it, yeah, good.
And I think that one thing to know, that it's not all just dollars and cents, so the cost impacted, the impact was to the educational value. So the return, when you looked at different scenarios, you got, they put a value, an educational value to, to each different proposal and change, so, so it wasn't all just about, you're gonna spend this much, but you're gonna spend this much and get this much educational value for it, so that was awesome.
I'm not on the committee, but I saw some of their materials that they handed out, and they've done similar work for districts around us, and you could see, um, what they prepared is very professional, very well-done.
I'm excited, because I think it plays in with the board and our goals that we're identifying as doing the facilities and how all that works together.
Yeah, and I'm, I, uh, I bet, Chuck, I bet they would come back, and I bet they would do that same, the same thing. If you feel like that same thing was important for the whole board and community, uh, I'm, I'm sure they would do that.
I would recommend it. I mean, if, if anybody, I don't know, do you think it was, it would be worth showing the community that everybody can hear, Kevin?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, if we treat it the way you all agree with us, perhaps we want to, which I think it is, but they, you know, prior to it, it would be that we did everything, so.
Okay, I think that sounds like we have a direction there. Anything else from the committees, don't anything in particular you wanted to point out from those?
Uh, no, that, just the site committee. Yep.
Perfect. Any other board communications?
If not, then we'll move into our public hearing, which I really brought out, so apologize for that.
Anyways, yeah.
So we have a public hearing for our school calendar. Obviously, there's two versions of the school calendar.
Right, so I, there are no, there are no changes since we went over this, um, the, the last, uh, at our last meeting or our last Policy Committee meeting. Um, I, I do have, I, I would ask you to approve two calendars. Uh, one is the regular calendar with, um, the old treasures celebration, uh, as, as part of the calendar and then, and that's the first one in your packet. And then the other one is, um, the, uh, similar, but without the old treasure celebration. Uh, of course, we all hope, uh, are hoping that, uh, that, that happens and, um, but if, if you would go ahead and approve both, then we've got it, you know, we have a plan going, going forward. Both very similar, um, and a very similar, uh, ending dates, you know, in that, in that, uh, late May. So unless you have any questions, when we get there, uh, I would ask that you.
Does anybody have anything to address the more concerning the public, or the school calendar for next year? Everybody looks excited out there. It looks like we don't have anybody to address us concerning the proposed school calendar. Okay. Moving on then, consent items. So we have personnel and open enrollment, which we do have a.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second. Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved.
Moving on, we have no unfinished business, so first under new business is the preliminary fiscal year 22 budget, which we have in our packets and I'll turn it over to Adam.
Okay, uh, as Jeffrey said, you have the preliminary budget that I've been working on and, um, have, but discussed this with, uh, Mr. Henriksen. And, uh, also we did, um, run this by the Finance Committee on, uh, last Friday. So, um, what I prepared and read several different scenarios, but this is what I've recommended. Um, we, uh, go with the 6% instructional support levy, ISL. Uh, as you recall, when we did, uh, renew that, uh, just recently here, we did vote to go up to 10%, so we could go up to 10%. But doing that raised the property taxes considerably, like the neighborhood of 60, 60 cents, uh, for a thousand dollars worth of taxable valuation, so, uh, recommending to keep it at the 6%. I'm recommending to, um, increase the cash reserve levy by $25,000, which is, takes it up to 1.3 million. Uh, the management levy increasing that $25,000, uh, and as you will, as you know, the management levy is basically used for, um, property and casualty insurance as well as a few other things like early retirement benefits and, uh, unemployment insurance, um, workers' compensation, a few things like that, so, um, but again, based on, uh, preliminary information from our property and casualty insurance company, we, uh, I, I wanted to increase at least that much, so. And then you see that we do follow in the budget guarantee, which we've talked about last couple of months, uh, based on our, uh, enrollment trial from last year. That, uh, comes to $114,376 and, uh, the way that is set up by the state, uh, in Iowa law, that is a responsibility of local property taxpayers, so that amounts, just for your information, 18.44 cents, um, again, for a thousand dollars of taxable valuation and, uh, that is included in the rate that we're recommending here. But, um, down below, if you look at the levy rate column, I, for fiscal year 21, I wrote when our, in red, what our current, uh, numbers are. And then, uh, also you will see in the blue, um, what this proposed, uh, budget would be. So it comes, uh, down to a total of $13.98 and, uh, again, this is per a thousand dollars of taxable amount of valuation and that's an increase of about, I feel, just a little over nine cents, so. The next part of the process again will be, um, the budget, um, hearing that will be set tonight. That will be, uh, for April 12th, our next school board meeting. And then also, uh, I need to certify that to the state, to the county, uh, by April 15th, so.
Any questions? I would just add that, um, the Finance Committee went through this with John and it also, and we were, one of the reasons we addressed, um, increasing our cash reserve is just the unknown of what's to come. And so we felt that if we put this proposal together, it puts us in the best position moving forward.
Okay, moving on then, we have to set our public hearing date for fiscal year 22 budget for April 12th at 6:15. Would entertain a motion for that.
So moved. Second.
Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, so we will have our public hearing next month concerning our proposed budget. Moving on, we have the second reading of School Board Policy 707.5, which is our school wellness policy.
Yeah, no, this is the second reading. Uh, there have been no changes, uh, to the language that we went through, uh, last month. Uh, so unless you have questions, I would recommend that you approve the second reading of the school wellness policy.
I move that we approve this second. Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved then, our second reading. And now we're on to opening School Board Policy Series 600 Educational Programs for Review.
Okay, so I will, I'll review our, uh, Series 600 Educational Program, uh, and have any first reading changes for you or recommendations or changes for you, uh, next month. Um, I'll go through anything that the School Board Association has, uh, regarding the 600 series, um, and then that'll finish off our policy series for this year. We'll do a first and second reading of the 600s.
Okay, moving on then, it is time for approval or consideration of approval for the school calendar. So we've all had an opportunity to review both those proposals. If there are not any other further questions concerning that, I would entertain a motion to approve both of the proposed school calendars, one with old pressures vacation and one without.
So moved. Second.
Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
That is approved then, and let's hope we did use the one with old pressures in there.
That's for sure, yep.
Next up is the consideration of, um, approval concerning our high school chiller system.
Okay, so, um, I have been working with the, the Site Committee on this for several months. Um, the, the chiller system here at the high school, uh, is original, so it's just about 22 years old. Um, we have, we've, we've replaced two of three compressors on the system. Uh, the freon that the system uses or the cooling agent that it uses is being phased out. Uh, so we really, uh, it's very expensive and being phased out, so we really need to, um, uh, get that, that system, um, replaced. So, uh, I have it as part of our Buildings and Grounds project list. Um, it's, it's about a $300,000, um, item when you include the engineering, uh, for that. So, uh, I do have it accounted for in our Buildings and Grounds project list, but I'm asking you, I'm bringing it to you tonight because the lead time on the equipment, uh, is about eight to 10 weeks. And so I'd like to get your approval to move forward with the project itself, um, and that would be the recommendation of the Site Committee as well. And then, um, the next item is the, is the engineering proposal, but what I'm asking for is your approval to move forward with replacing the chilling system here at the high school.
Does the board have any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve that.
As scheduled, those project replacements are over 2021.
Yeah, exactly. We, we have talked, uh, with Klingner about that. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, before we, before we sign off on this, um, we'll have to, I mean, we, we have to have it, I mean, we have to have it in the, the first part of, uh, August, really. So, uh, we will make sure that that is very clear, um, in the, uh, in, in their, um, in the work that they're going to do for us, so.
So it'll be done before school starts.
It's gonna, yeah, it has to. That's, we, we want to get started, we want to get things ordered, it's, it's, it's just gotta be done, you know, it's gotta be done by the, by.
Does it run throughout the winter as well?
Uh, throughout the summer or?
Or winter? Does it run with winter, summer and winter?
No, the chilling system just, just runs in the, you know, the springtime and then the, and then the fall, um, and, and over the summer, you know, as we try and keep certain areas moved, so, yeah.
I'd entertain, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, high school, we have the new chiller system. Moving on to consideration of our Van Allen Elementary exterior improvement.
So Jennifer, letter G is actually the, the approval of the Klinger Associates Engineering Proposal for the chiller. So, uh, that proposal itself is, is in your packet there. Um, and as Josh mentioned, uh, we, we're not gonna, we won't sign off on anything that doesn't, if they, if they can't, uh, get this done by the first part of August. So the, uh, the can, the, uh, project itself, um, the scope of services would be the design and the development of the construction, uh, documents, the bidding and the contract procurement. Since this is a, uh, a, uh, a project that is more than $155,000, then we have to get, uh, competitive bids, uh, for this. So we need to have the bidding process done. Uh, they'll, Klinger would, would design it, size it, help us with the bidding process and, and get those bids in. Uh, they'll help us with construction administration and closing out the project, uh, and any consulting services. Uh, the cost of the proposal is $14,275 for their part of the project. And again, uh, it's, uh, uh, our, our research would tell us that that $300,000 number that we have in for the project would cover the, the equipment and these engineering services. So I would recommend that you approve the, the Klinger, uh, proposal.
Is there a motion to approve our Klinger and Associate Engineering Proposal?
So moved.
Second. Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, so we approve our agreement with Klinger and Associates. Now we'll move on to consideration of the Van Allen Elementary exterior improvement.
Right, so what I'm, what I'm asking you tonight, again, as, as per the recommendation of the Site Committee, um, we, we have these, uh, we've been moving forward on this, the construction documents, uh, are just very near completion from Shire Hattery. Um, and I'm asking for your approval to move forward on this because we, we are going to be working with about four different trades in this project. Uh, we'll have the roofers, uh, the carpenters, the mason, and then the flatwork, the concrete flatwork. So we really need to move forward on this so we can get, uh, contractors and get them scheduled and, and try and get this done over the summer. Um, now this project, the total cost of the project is estimated to be somewhere around $125,000, uh, when, when we're all done. And so, um, we can competitively quote this project. It's not a competitive bid, uh, it's under that $155,000, so we can bid, or excuse me, we can quote this, we can get two competitive quotes, uh, or a minimum of two competitive quotes from each of those, uh, areas and, and go ahead and move forward. But I'm asking for your permission to move forward with the project itself. Again, this is accounted for in our Buildings and Grounds, uh, project list at, at about $125,000.
Any other questions concerning the Van Allen Exterior Project? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve. So, so moved.
Second.
Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, approves of Van Allen Exterior Project. Next we have consideration to approve an overnight trip request for FFA to State Convention.
So one of these, one of these times, the FFA is gonna be able to take a trip and stay overnight. We appreciate, uh, appreciate that you've approved them a couple of times and hopefully, uh, this one doesn't get, uh, canceled or changed. I know, uh, Mr. Jones has said they're still kind of working out the details, uh, but we'd like your approval, uh, he'd like your approval to take, um, uh, a handful of students to the State Convention in Ames, uh, April 18th through 20th, um, if, if all systems are go. I would recommend that you approve.
Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve, make up an, make it an overnight trip to State Convention.
So moved.
Second. Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jones, you can go to Ames.
Des Moines now this year.
Oh, down to Des Moines.
Well, it's not, it's not in Ames.
Just because of Ames COVID protocols, um, I've seen totally allowing like 1,100 people in their facilities, um, so they have now moved to Des Moines now, just as a temporary, so they can have all the different event centers and Wells Fargo, spread people out.
Okay, all right, that's my mistake on the agenda there, I thought it was Ames. Always been Ames, though, but not Ames this year, but, okay.
Okay, up next is approval of the AFSC contract.
Okay, so, um, we, we finished our negotiations with AFSC two weeks ago, um, and the details are here in the tentative agreement, you have that, uh, in your packet, just quickly go over that. Wages, uh, what we agreed to was on Schedule A for custodians and maintenance, was it, um, a 10 cent per hour increase, uh, to the custodian and maintenance schedules plus a step increase? So everybody moving down the step on those schedules and then we increased the schedule by 10 cents, uh, per hour. Uh, we also proposed step increase on Schedule A for the para educators and a 15 cent per hour increase to the para salary schedule. Um, and then we have a, a couple of paras, a few paras that are, uh, all the way at the bottom, they've been with us a long time, they're all the way at the bottom of Lane 25, uh, and so we proposed, uh, increasing that stipend, um, 15 cents, uh, from, from 55 to 70 cents. So the total on that, uh, was 2.27 total package increase at a cost of about $61,000. Uh, we did, uh, tentatively agree to a two-year agreement for next year and the following year with a wage opener, uh, for both years, so, um, would, uh, unless you have questions, I would recommend that you approve.
Are there any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Adam, roll call.
Sandersville?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, that approves our AFSC contract. Next, the board is gonna move into negotiation discussions, which will be closed, so, thank you everyone for coming.